Okay, I'm going to call our June 7, 2021 village board meeting order. Welcome all over here. This is the, our, in our, um, this is the library, so if we have anything that's difficult to compare with us, so I will call up the meeting order, welcome please.
Gary Goodfords, Bill Williams.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Here.
Chris Almer.
Here.
Bill Ryan.
Here.
Sam Kaufman.
Here.
Sarah Frank.
Here.
Okay, first item we have is confirmation of open meeting compliance of the proceedings officially on availability.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the one feature green on June 3rd. The final agenda was posted at all three village board signatures on June 4th and the final agenda is available online on June 4th.
Okay, thank you. Next we have another agenda for any vote or write-up for a motion. Motion by Selah, Secretary of General, any other comments?
Just one note, one note for the board. Uh, for the board and for the, for the public, in fact, when we have public comments. This is a makeshift approach at, uh, at our recording capabilities. So this little guy right here is picking up, picking up the audio. So it's really critical to make sure that what you're speaking, whether it be in motion or public speaking at the, up at the podium, that you're coming through the speakers up there, so we capture that on the meeting recording. So make, we'll take the extra time needed to pass the microphone, so all is captured for the recording.
Okay, thanks Todd. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
We don't have to do roll call markers. It could be voice up.
For consent, oh, that's right. We've been doing this for so long on Zoom, we don't have to.
Trust me, I'm excited.
Consensus agenda, all on paper, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next we have the public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to make a comment on any of the agenda, agenda or just comment agenda? Please.
I do have some sheets that were turned in, so we'll do those in the order they were turned in first. Um, so the first one is Greg Gans. Yeah, and it's a two-minute time limit.
My name is Greg Gans, I live in Southbridge. I'd first like to say quality opportunities motivation on our society, the age and the relaxed racism and prejudice are disgusting and reprehensible. My concern is the village has initiatives concerning diversity and to lead inclusion early in progress, but the definitions of what those terms mean, goals focused with them are absolutely not defined. In a meeting with the village administrator, I was told he was in an eighteen-month collaboration to develop a strategic plan and finding those initiative terms and goals which would also require community assistance input. Having these initiatives in progress without having an operation defined, our firm's goals is to look for the course we are currently taking a deep dive into our hiring practices. We also have partnered with an organization in the University of Wisconsin named University of C I T Y, which, which proposes in pursuit of social justice, racial equality, inclusion and community stability, project of one of seven states, complete a thorough review of village quota ordinances and related policies to identify and recommend modifications that will serve to address aspects of systemic racism and discrimination within the village's governing structures and rules. I do not believe that wanting to be as a government and society are systematically racist, which I believe is at a minimum, by at least some of these initiative proposals and documents. Moving forward with these initiatives without clear operational definitions and goals that have been defined, seems to me to be a solution looking for a problem. Policies bound to be objectively and articulately prejudicial to be addressed and changed, creating potentially costly practices in search of a problem to justify calling out our government and society as systemically racist, divisive, divisive, and appears to me as a partisan practice in which to justify separation of groups as oppressors and oppressed, to move toward desired partisan socioeconomic policies to achieve fundamental transformation of our society. This is occurring in our nonpartisan local government that absolutely should have the voice and input of the peoples, not during the middle or end of systemic racism as found in the beginning of the birth of the problems with our processes that appear transparent and the people are intelligently informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Eric Pierce.
If you, if you could, Eric, speak, speak like right into the center of the mic so we could actually hear you like this.
No, turntable. I was born in, I live in eighty, so. All right, Eagle. My name is Eric Pierce and I'm a resident of the Southbridge neighborhood. I want to address a growing concern I have about the direction the village is taking. I'm talking about the trend towards equity. Let me be absolutely clear, I abhor racism and discrimination and government art and for kin. This principle has been a guiding compass for me in my life. I always strive to treat people based on the characteristics of their character rather than the color of their skin or their sexual or gender identities. Racism has no place in Wauakee, which finds the trouble by this trend to make things equitable. All residents and visitors should be treated equally and should have equality in opportunities, not equality of outcomes. When I hear equity experts define equity, they tell me that equity takes you down, but we don't have equal starting points. And that if we treated people equally, then we wouldn't get the desired outcomes. Let that sink in, folks. It appears as if government officials everywhere are trying to implement a system that treats people unequally based on their race. I think that's about the most discriminatory thing I've heard in a long time. This is a very dangerous ideology to rationalize the different treatment of one class of race over another. I don't want future governments to rationalize treating people unequal. After all, that's what the Southern slavers did two hundred years ago. And what exactly are those desired outcomes? Equity experts are famous for showing this million boxes and several people trying to watch a ballgame. If a successful tall fan would just give up part of his boxes, or rather have them taken from him by the government, then the shorter fan can get seen again too. This might sound harsh, but we don't all deserve to see the game. We don't all deserve the same outcomes. We don't all deserve the same starting point either. I'd love an Olympic medal, but I don't have the same genetics as Michael Phelps or the same gold, and I haven't worked as hard as them. Do I deserve a gold medal? Many, many factors playing along with this people privilege, hard work, parents that work two jobs to pay for their kids' education, dumb luck, genetics, family structure and upbringing.
Todd.
Race certainly can affect the channel those people may face in their life, but it's not a defining aspect unless you truly try to agree with it, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy Voegey?
Yep, Kathy. Hi, my name is Kathy Beal, and here's her privacy since tonight. Um, just so I mentioned tag teaming, and some of the things that they've already said, I won't take my full two minutes, but just say that I've recently come across diversity, equity, inclusion, and, um, that side. Absolutely racism is no real place in anywhere, or not, especially in our community. I dug around, started digging around, once I heard the case initiatives that actually have been in place, starting, because these words mean, have some, that can mean a lot of things. And I was on the website, and I actually couldn't find much of definitions, I couldn't find benchmarks for the initiatives, I couldn't find how success was going to be defined. And so I decided to come tonight to see if I could have some of those questions answered, because it's concerning, it seems to be something, a movement at a national level, that is, is, gentlemen, so I'll put it, is, is a problem, a solution looking for a problem, and I just don't know that we have that here in Wauakee.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mary Heimbacher.
Mary, can I have your 306 West Third Street? There's been much discussion about Wauakee for many years. It is a generally hot topic of discussion. It is time for we to form a committee to look at a pool and resplat pants for our village. Almost every surrounding community has one, Lodi, Forest, Sunbury, Middleton, Roman, and Madison. It's time to get a committee, and let's get this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any more slips, but I do have a written, or email comment, so once everyone's done, I can read that.
Okay, does anybody else have a desire to be a fellow of that, of community?
I'm going to keep this very, very quick, listening to some of the comments.
Can we get your names, please?
My name is Dick Griffin, and I've lived here a year, very, very impressed with Wauakee and the things that are going at. When it comes to racism, I have not seen that. I'm not going into detail of my background. I moved here because my doctor had me move here because of cancer, and I have moved close to one of my sons. But in the village across Plains, I was village president for seven years. And during that period of time, it was one of my priorities to make sure that everything in the village was equal with everyone there. And my philosophy basically was, if it did not benefit the village, it did not have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, so you have one more to read, go ahead.
Yeah. Hello, my name is Mary of Goolick, and my family is Wauakee, 2014. We have two children, ages eight and almost eleven, and we live on Canterbury Court, which is located by the middle school. This comment concerns a community pool. The Wauakee community needs an outdoor pool that is open to everyone, especially in the summer. Right now, my family must drive to pools in neighboring areas so we can swim. Wauakee claims to be a great community for families, but with disrespect, we are sorely lacking. The pool builds, the pools built in the newer neighborhoods are exclusive to the people who live there. I have asked to join, I have asked to join several neighborhood pools, but because I do not reside in a specific neighborhood, we are not allowed to pay and become members. Our community needs a long-term solution to this longstanding problem relying on a private developer to fulfill a demand that benefits only of some residents, is not beneficial to the long-term goals of the village. Rather, it creates numerous points of division around class. It silos residents based on where they live. Is this the type of community Wauakee wants to be? There wasn't much around this issue several years ago that accumulated in the meeting at the library that I attended. Where are we in that progress? Thank you for your time sincerely. Sincerely, Mary of Goolick, 104 Canterbury Court.
Okay.
Everything I have.
All right, just for clarification, for someone who are due to our meeting, except for some comments, we don't, as a board, we need comments regarding all the comments. I have to repeat it, staff occasionally feel there's a question, but we don't never respond to any comments during the session. I will say that after meeting, I will be available to any other questions, so I'm happy to take those from me tomorrow, tonight, especially if it's true. So, all right, moving on, let's move to our first item, which is a public hearing. Public hearing discussion actually served by survey map and reason of the last, or to your own, Williamson, 15316, if that would make sense.
And just a quick staff report, this has gone through the process of involving the plant commission and joint plant commission. There is unanimous support for approval, the Tonner West Court recommends approval. Details are in your packet, I would just add that this was also reviewed by the village's contract planner, who indicates in your memo that this isn't compliance or conference plan, we recommend approval as well.
All right, comments, questions? So then I'm open with the public comment, or public hearing for anyone who would like to address the board on this issue. If you'd like to leave a comment. Not less than two minutes that we waited for, taking, so we have no more comments for us, we'll move on. Board members, any questions for staff? Or comments, or would, or a motion?
Since, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I have to close the public hearing. I can't, I close the public hearing.
Go ahead, Bill.
Since the Tonner West Court has already looked at this and put their approval on it, I think a motion, we approve the CSM and reason 15613, say that a 19 is ready by the joint plan.
Do we have a motion back to the rule? I'll second, second by senior comment. Any other comments or questions? See number four, all on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Vote? Aye, yes. All right, next under license permits. Right, right, we follow these, or?
I, go.
No.
Okay. I think you can just identify the fact that we have, what is that? Twenty items under licenses and permits. Okay, so I'll identify that we have twenty items under license permits. We're looking for a motion that's specified, unless somebody has a concern with the license and terms.
I can just give an overview, included in your packet tonight, not for approval, is our annual renewal of our liquor licenses for both on-premise and carryout liquor and beer in the village of Wauakee. All twenty have submitted the necessary paperwork to gain access onto your agenda. These permits would take effect on July 1, 2021, and expire June 30, 2022. If the board can take them one at a time, or make one motion to approve them all, that motion should be contingent upon payment of all outstanding bills and review by the group's department.
Okay, thank you, Peter. I will make the motion to approve. Second, I have a written, any other comments? Okay, then we'll call the question, all on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Vote? All right, next to the new business, we have a first one discussion and update on Hy-Vee grocery store planning, or store project planning, development.
Yeah, I'll just note that this item was added on the, on the agenda at Chris's request, really to address what has been citizen questions and concerns and curiosities about the progress or lack thereof of the Hy-Vee grocery store, which has all necessary approvals to proceed and be built. Also, in relation to the public comments that we have heard, there, there is a lot of information that is just simply inaccurate, that has been shared in the community. I kind of give kudos to the residents who have reached out to Village Hall, or have followed the materials that we have provided. Unfortunately, there, there remains to be rumors that are circulating about the role and ability and actions of the village board that in those, in those actions have stood against the progress of Hy-Vee. I will unequivocally tell you that there is no such action or occurrence that's occurring on a part of the village board as a group or any single member. That is just simply not true. So what Chris asked is that we have this on the agenda, we did invite Hy-Vee to provide an update, they do have a written update, Chris, if it's okay, I'd like to read that paragraph from them. Then we also have Connor here from F D G. Connor, if you want to head up to the podium, Connor represents F D G, the developer of the overall project, and he can also discuss the relationship between F D G and Hy-Vee, and what they're aware of in regards to the progress occurring with Hy-Vee. But if it's okay, Chris, I'm just going to quick read this, this email we received on 5/18/21 from Casey Banjor, who's the director of real estate for Hy-Vee. We appreciate the village president wanting Hy-Vee to present at the June 7 village board meeting, however, we do not have any construct, any construction updates to provide to the community at this time, so will not be attending the meeting. Please know that we remain committed to the, to building a new store in Wauakee. Due to the impact of COVID-19 and several other factors, we have had to reevaluate construction timelines for the projects we have in our pipeline. For example, since orders for our online grocery service have tripled during the pandemic, we're constructing dedicated pickup areas for our aisle online service at many of our stores to alleviate traffic and safety concerns from the front of these locations, hence causing us to prioritize the project over others at this time. When we have a better timeframe for our Wauakee project, we'll be sure to relay those details to you. And as far as timeframe, back in January of this year, we received the information from the same director of real estate that their construction start date is proposed for 2022, although they still can't put a certainty on it. What we hear here is that they're expecting some physical changes to the facility. We do expect that will result in a submittal of a modified site plan, and that process will go through village review for approval. So that, that's what I'm expecting, and I guess I would, and, and as, as far as village staff goes, we have no further information beyond that. With that, I guess I would ask Connor if, if F D G has any additional information, or can at least comment on the commitment of Hy-Vee to the village that you're aware of?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Todd, everyone.
Connor, if you could just make sure you lift the mic up and just get right in, get right into that thing there.
Awesome. Good evening, everyone. Connor, your report, Bill, we've heard that, I just wanted to kind of reiterate a lot of the same sentiments that Todd was sharing. You know, I'm not here to speak that Hy-Vee to be out, they, they, I don't know, store a bit, the underlying sentiment, every update that's gotten from them, is they're really committed to Hy-Vee. They know what a great market it is, they know what a great community is, and they own a lot. They closed down that by July of 2019, so, the fact door anywhere, of the information room, when there's a delay, it's, it's going to be raising questions, that's a natural point, you know, all I can relate to, like, is we are aware of, and that is the commitment to building the story. A lot of the items that we have heard from Hy-Vee have been directly related to COVID-19 and changes to their stores, so, you know, some of the guys, in KCC, they are like restructuring, disbanding online order platform, they're changing their internal schedule, they are essentially, the world got turned upside down, it's probably the Taylor's getting adjusted, and when they have, it's not just one store that they're changing plans for, it's everything that they have, so, they do remain committed, but that timeline, revising all those plans is subject to additional approvals, that's why they're unable to commit to that, that's simply, one other item to reiterate is that Phil's staff and Todd's been a great representative in discussion with Hy-Vee, that tape, working with the, so, and great support, and we're hopeful it's going to be better for everyone once that first, first show comes out outside or inside the board, so, I'll be able to raise questions. Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Yeah, I would just, the only comment I really have about this is that we share, Todd's sentiment a little bit, that's disappointing, when you hear people in the community think that the village board has somehow tried to block Hy-Vee in some way, when we've given them every approval that they can get to this point. During the processes we went through, for those who may not have known, or maybe, for those that do, festival food is also interested in coming to Wauakee. And I will tell you that I supported both of the stores coming back. It wasn't one over the other, it was, I was pointing to both of them. They probably made a little check-in with one another, I didn't know that for sure, but I was assuming that was the case. One is quite a bit more weird than the other, but there was really nothing we could do, or nothing more that we can do at this point, push them to do, that has been in our power at this point. As you know, they were requesting TIF assistance when we were starting with this process, quite a bit of TIF assistance, in my opinion, that came down, came down, came down, and eventually was eliminated. So there has been, there is no TIF associated with this project. So yeah, just really, if you want information in regards to anything in the village, I will tell you, contact Todd, myself, or one of your village board members, and we're happy to answer your questions, if we can. If there's a legal situation going on, obviously, we're not going to deal with that thing. In general, we will respond to your questions. So please do that, rather than you're saying, out online, it's a much better way to go through your life. It'll be much, it'll be much happier than reading things that generally are, well, just say, point of views. So, thank you, Todd, and that'll leave, thank you. As far as the rest of, are we getting anything else for just?
No, the, the agenda was specific to Hy-Vee, so we won't be discussing other elements that we're impressed.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Chris, thanks. All right, next we have a special update regarding COVID-19 pandemic. Can I start? It's great being here, thank you. This is a momentous occasion for us to be here and meeting in person again. For those who've been vaccinated, congratulations, good job. For those who haven't, I'd encourage you to do that, it's your choice, obviously, but for those who've been vaccinated and are honored to see each other's faces, I work in a bank, you know, with like, I'm in a mess. But, this, this is much better, so, Todd, any other to review or that, or anything?
Well, I'd only add that, we do hope to continue the village board meetings in person. There will be some committee meetings when we know that the technology needs to present, project, and share materials is going to be critical, that we may still do Zoom for the time being, so as to really be effective with that information sharing. So the, the hope, the goal is for those all to be back in person as well, and we're working on the technologies to make that happen. So besides that, staff, along with you, Chris, and I'm sure the rest of the board, are also glad to be back here, we're glad to be having the public in our, in our facilities, and joining them and using them as they deserve.
I'll just say, we're very happy, most people got their vaccine, I encourage anybody else that hasn't, down to the H group, it's, we all want to get theirs, because as you can tell, the man has changed the world for us. Go ahead. Okay, thank you.
And before we go on, Chris, we do have an agenda scenario that's going to be a little bit tricky, which may require rearrangement. Erin has a commitment that's going to require her to depart by 7:15. We have a closed session on the agenda, I believe two of our six present board members will be abstaining from participation in that closed session. Therefore, the four remaining board members are critical for that discussion, and Brian and I are recommending, in fact, that we move up the item related to the, numbers eight and 12, and take those on now, Chris. I do understand that's going to cause us to have a closed session right in the middle of a meeting process, that's not perfect, that is the circumstance that we're facing here today due to the, the corn situation. So unless there's an objection, that's what we would advise to Chris.
Okay, do I have, do we have to take a motion on that? If you just modify that by yourself?
I think you can just modify it by yourself, as long as there's no objections.
Do we have any objections? Okay, seeing none, let's move to number eight. Which is discussed and take action on resolution override of the issuance of municipal obligations for expansion projects pursuant to agreement executed by the village. So as Todd mentioned, I'll be refusing myself on this topic. I will also. So, so I will both be refusing ourselves, and, you can move, go take over the meeting, Brad?
I'm just having a question.
Okay, I'll point, Bill Ryan, I'm going to question, see, I'm, regulations.
No, no, no.
Brian has a presentation.
I can, so, page 291 of your packet, is where we have the staff memo regarding the issuance of the municipal revenue obligations. One is associated with the Uber expansion project agreement that we have already executed with occupied, an occupied entity, and the other is the warehouse expansion. This is essentially an administrative step for the village board, we've already acknowledged within the agreements that we've signed, that we would issue these MROs within thirty days of the execution of the agreements. This is just the step to actually issue those MROs consistent with the language of the agreement. So the recommended notion is at the bottom of page 291, and I can certainly answer the questions that you might have.
So, this is not a closed session?
This is now a closed session.
Okay, recommend motion. To approve the resolution authorized issuance of municipal revenue obligation. Not to exceed 1.19. Allow, 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 and to approve the resolution authorized issuance. And then municipal revenue obligation not to exceed 1.75.
So. I guess if you have any questions or further discussion, I can certainly answer them, but.
So, these are exactly what we talked about before.
Yes, these are, these are MROs that are consistent with the agreements that we've already executed. This is effectively administrative stuff. We're obligated to issue the MROs based on.
Bill, can you make sure the microphone's up close for it? Thank you.
So, that's the next item, then, that we have moved up on the agenda. That starts on page 359 of your packet. And I do believe that there are representatives of Octopi that would like to make a short presentation to the Village Board before we kind of click going to closed session. This is, you know, the staff memo essentially summarizes that we have received some documents from Octopi that we can discuss more, in more detail when we go into closed session. But I think unless Todd, you want to say anything, I think it may be appropriate that to allow our representative to.
Hi, good evening, I'm excited to talk a little bit more about the company, and the other companies have talked about the range. Well, yeah, I heard the state entities. When we released this process many, many months ago, the original plan was to move the warehouse first across the street, and then the west side expansion, your building. And remember, time, very, very large projects, and we were trying to do our best to move the finance, and get at least one of the projects done first. And at the time, we thought the warehouse was going to be done first, and a year later, our west side is mine. What ended up happening is that basically our banks said, we'll only do the west side expansion right now. And then you have to go on the warehouse. But, we really, really wanted to do both projects at the same time. And we certainly find what they all have, which is the west side expansion. We'll do that first, and then we'll try to find another way to do the warehouse. And after this was passed, we kept working every single day, and we found a project for the warehouse, which is basically an investment firm, which is very well-known in the investment area. It's going to build it for us, we're going to lease it back from them, and then hopefully in a few years, we might. That was a way to get all projects on that right now, because we need it. And I didn't even think about the repercussions of the way the MRO, or they keep the sign. And unfortunately, there's a clause provision that is not allowed us to move forward with both projects. And it's not for me, it's up to the bank that's helping us with both projects. And we're asking, I didn't want to be here, I feel terrible asking, like, to change something that was already approved. But there's a clause, there's a couple, two items, but there's a clause which Robert will help explain better than me, because of our order, why we would like to ask very least, like, otherwise, we can actually pull all projects this year and get them done by one end of this year and the other one early next year. What, like, or ask us to just get things moving fast across, instead of waiting for them to improve. I hope that official work growing really fast. We hired over 40 people last six months. We have 30 job openings right now, so if we want to be Wanta Key, we want to be Wanta Key. We're just asking for those qualifications to allow us to compete, join, and improve both projects. Now, we go to Robert, who's, I think, who can explain it better than me. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Robert Proctor, and I worked with the Village Attorney on these tasks several times. Just to kind of get you to where we're now, we originally started, there's the brewery expansion project, and there's the warehouse expansion. Two Octopi, they're together, because they're both necessary. They need both to do, Octopi signed a large number of contracts to produce different products on behalf of other manufacturers that require the additional brewery space, but also requires the additional warehouse space. Some of the mixing and so forth will happen in the warehouse. Right now, it's about 150,000 square feet from the tech, in the tech line buildings in Wanta Key. And as you know, in later, that's not a long-term solution for Octopi, because the owners of the tech line facility have different, have different home range plan. So, this is vital to you. So, originally, we came forward, and there's going to be one TIP agreement with all projects needed for Wanta Key. What happened is, is that because they were going to happen at different times, and the finances started to become different, they needed to be split out, made it up to two agreements. That's when we originally thought that the warehouse project would build first, and be done by the time that the brewery project will build. That's, so if you look at the two agreements, the TIP warehouse agreement says it has to be completed by December 31st, 2022. And the brewery agreement says it has to be done by December 31st, 2023. Now, they're happening simultaneously. And because of that, that's caused some problems with provisions in the documents that we agreed to, that our lenders no longer are staying. So, to go through them first, one of the documents we had is the brewery expansion amendment. And in the brewery expansion.
Robert, can I start with that? Maybe we should hang this over right now, just if you're going to talk. We haven't had any of that.
Oh, okay. Well, Brian, I'm probably worried about how much detail you want to go into, so you can just.
Quickly, just, just enough for the people who might be watching, recording this meeting. I'll just apologize right now for the lack of camera attention and focus on speakers. It's just conky right now in our sort of makeshift arrangement in the room, so my apologies for those who might be watching, recording, or watching.
Okay, so, since we thought the brewery project was 20%. One of the obligations of the brewery project is that in order for you to get out of the warehouse project. And so, when we went to the bank, we need to just say, set up our running, we all were willing to set up and ready to pull. We've already started the expansion of the brewery, expected to be done in the next eight to 12 months, and need to close on our loan, and under development agreement, basically, the bank has said, one of the problems is, you are underwriting, if you don't complete the warehouse project, then the TIP agreements aren't, won't be made under the brewery project. And other than, even though we understand how commission you are, we don't have control of the TIP, or excuse me, the warehouse project. So, they said that's a problem, and we can't get the financing to complete the loan. So, what we're asking is for the village to remove that provision between you, which basically says that from that agreement, so that we can close on the loan for the brewery. There's a number of reasons we believe that makes sense for the village to do that. First of all, is, as Isaac has said, Octopi is 100% committed to creating the warehouse project. It needs the warehouse as part of the brewery project. Without the warehouse, brewery expansion doesn't make any sense, because of all of the materials, and some of the process has to take place there. It's already signed contracts with all its architect and its builder for about $600,000, a little over $600,000 in order to complete engineering and design. It's already been invoiced $135,000 towards that, but that money will be gone, would stop the warehouse project. It's entered, it's all the terms for the lease, for the development, for the build, the lease, and the lease are done. The investor for the warehouse is Sarah Investments, they really won't know in this area. I'm sure Todd can speak to one who knows them. They speak to the credibility of the fact that the warehouse project is going to happen. Basically, Sarah Investments is going to take ownership of the man. They have investors, they're going to build the warehouse, they're going to do a triple at least back to Octopi, which means Octopi pays the government, real estate taxes, maintenance, takes care of everything that's in order. So, they're kind of at like a finance. And, and that's all done for just waiting on issuing these documents in order to finish that document. So, we're ready to go, but in order, but that 3D provision leave the village security. So, in order to replace that security with something, Octopi is willing to do it to some sort of agreement to say, liquidated damages, we put forward $100,000 to say, if the warehouse project doesn't get completed, Octopi will pay $100,000 to the village as liquidated damages. As we put, as I explained, you have to remember that there is no financial risk to the village, because the village is only, it's a payback chip, as you all know. Only when the real estate taxes get paid all the time, are the TIP payments made. So, there's no financial issue. The issue is, how is the village, the village really wants the warehouse done, obviously, it's going to be done. You know, we put forward those as, you know, the reasons that we need to drive it. We're also willing to put our own money on the line as a penalty if it doesn't. So, that's what one of the S is, is to have that provision developed. The second issue becomes on the warehouse project itself. So, Octopi has entered into the agreement, or its related entity, to, under the TIP, to say that, you know, we're going to build the warehouse, and we also promised the village that we would stay in Wanta Key. And if they don't stay in Wanta Key over time, if they move or sell the project off, then it has to pay, Octopi has to pay the tip there. And the way this agreement is set up, before we even receive the bill of service, it, that becomes a mean against the warehouse property, and when Sarah Investments takes over ownership of the property, it puts a limit on the project as sort of like a development. So, Sarah Investments is obviously saying, well, the TIP's not with us, we're not going to benefit from the TIP, so we shouldn't be on the hook for the liability. And so, what we would ask for, and that's the second amendment, which would be to say that the TIP agreement will be assigned to Octopi, so that Octopi will step up and say, we're responsible for all of the obligations under it, like paying back the TIP if we don't live up to our honest to stay. In addition, Isaac is willing to step up and give a personal guarantee, saying, I personally guarantee that Octopi will pay back the TIP if we don't complete our, if we don't live up to our obligations. And as a third claim, because there is a number of issues in that agreement, is that since we want to take an offer of the warehouse project, we would be able to enter into a de-restriction of the brewery property that says that the brewery property, or Octopi's, at the sole, that all proceeds have to pay the village, any outstanding amounts owed back. Now, just to be clear, that have to be subordinated to our mortgages, because they have to be behind the mortgage. But, what we're looking for is, because right now, we have previously secured our obligations to the warehouse property, we want to say, okay, well, Octopi, Isaac, and the roof shop can step up to secure the obligations that go. And these are just things that we didn't think, like, you know, these are things we would have brought up in February, March, April, but we have no how this was going to go. It's, as Isaac said, this is really exciting time, we're expanding really fast, we're going to go forward with both projects right now, and the lending, not going to complicate it for us, because of, but the positive tonight I may ask, because that's because we're the right board, and putting shelves in the ground for both of them very soon. We just got to get through this, so happy to answer the questions.
So, I might miss, Todd, we've done this earlier, haven't we done? Yeah, the warehouse, we want to get it done by April of this year. And the borough's expansion of the west side, we want to get it done by this December, John. We're already started construction.
I'm just going to say it over into the microphone, is December 31st of this year is a projected date for the brewery to be completed, which originally was 2023, and then early spring, or late, early spring next year, so 2022 for the warehouse.
What are the book rights about, two years back?
So, the, a lot of what Robert and Isaac have explained, or in the documents that I provided to you before they started speaking, I do think it's appropriate to go into closed session. We, I have not had a chance to speak without any of you about this issue. And, I mean, I do, I would say this, the two provisions, so there's essentially one provision in each agreement that Octopi is seeking to amend, are unique agreements that we put in. And I do believe that they have made a good faith effort to not just say, pull, you know, yes, they want some of the language to come out, but they've also made reasonable, you know, compromises on how can we try to provide the same level of protection that the village was seeking when we inserted that provisions document. And I don't think it's going to be a long closed session. I do anticipate that we would come back into open session and take action on this item number 12. But unless you have any questions for the Octopi representatives right now, I do think it would be appropriate then to go back to page three of our agenda, read the, read number 12, including the closed session language, and then we'll talk about that. Yes.
The Village Board made a closed session, as all part of my Scottish pitch, 1985. For the purpose of delivering a motion to address other contracts. Others discussed by publicists. Providing reasons required a closed session. Village Board made a closed session, discussing the action of something that is just a closed session.
So, we need a motion on that, a second.
Okay, roll call vote, Phil Willem?
Yes.
Aaron Moran?
Yes.
Bill Graham?
Yes.
Yes.
You guys can stay. We're going to go away and come back.
Do you want to say anything for the public?
Okay, so we're back in open session. So I would tell you that we're gonna make a vote, or at least here would be my recommendation. As we talk about the two agreements, my, the recommended motion would be motion to approve the first amendment to develop an agreement for the brewery expansion project. And the first amendment to develop an agreement for the warehouse expansion project, subject to final review and approval by the village attorney. Which gives me a little bit of flexibility based on discussion in a closed session to still work with Occupy, maybe on a few slight changes, but overall, I think the village board was satisfied with what was provided.
No, you hear what's up. No.
Thanks, Chris. The, I appreciate the comments that we heard earlier today. I think all perspectives are good when we're talking about diversity, equity, inclusion, that's for certain. I will share in regards to the notion of establishing a plan and parameters before taking action. This village board had their share of call upon them by many in the community to do something. And the decision was made by the board based on the actions we've taken so far, that the board has taken so far, to start to do things and take actions and pass resolutions, et cetera, while at the same time initiating a process to plan bigger. And to plan what a long-term plan for diversity, equity, inclusion should look like and mean in the long term for our community. So that would be my response to the comments made, made earlier. With that said, that, I think that's the extent, I think the main thing that you see in your packet following this item is a recognition of Juneteenth. And unless there's questions about our other ongoing diversity, equity, inclusion work. I'm happy if you care to proceed to the next item. So happy to answer any questions. And this item has been a matter of, of discussion. I, I took it upon myself based on the conversations we have participated, we as an organization of participating together to craft a resolution for your consideration. This is similar language, I did some research on communities across the country that have taken a look at a declaration regarding Juneteenth and its recognition. So if the village board cares to pass this recognition, it's here for you to do that today. And I'm happy to answer questions on that as well. It does exist as a, as an established, recognized data recognition in the state of Wisconsin.
I would like to see this resolution passed. I think everything in the beginning is well-written. And then there's an explanation as to why it should be passed. And we need to keep moving forward with our equity and inclusion process, and this is another step in the community.
Do you have any other comments? That are be flying with flags?
That is not proposed in the resolution, although I would note that some communities have, there is a designated flag for Juneteenth. And it has been flown above other public buildings.
Okay, so I would just bring up that when we did our motion approvals of the pride flag that we wanted to policy, started establishing, I'm assuming we're going to be having that.
Yeah, Brian, Brian and I have initiated the research into a policy to guide those decisions in the future, we anticipate at the next board meeting, to have an initial draft review. This is not suggesting that we fly. Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Both? How does everyone for me to read this?
Except you, Chris.
I'm gonna read the resolution as presented. So, whereas it has been over 400 years since the first Africans were enslaved and bound to the rod to become the United States, including Cleveland, Florida in 1526. And the point comfort Virginia in 1619. And whereas it was not until June 191865 that federal troops arrived in Yellowstone, Texas, finally emancipated enslaved Texans. And whereas news of the end of slavery traveled slowly to enslaved laborers throughout Texas, with some plantation owners keeping the news from them until after the harvest of that year. And whereas June 19 was known as Juneteenth in acknowledgement of that fact, and the commemoration of the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas although slavery was formally abolished in December of 1865, with the enactment of the 13th Amendment to the US Constitution. It contains an exception for the labor of incarcerated individuals, which is incited to rational practices, policies and laws targeting and disproportionately disenfranchising black people in America. Through criminalization, exploitation of their labor, massive incarceration, and voter suppression. And whereas in 1866 emancipated men and women in Texas began celebrating Juneteenth as Jubilee Day. And whereas most states, including Wisconsin, have declared Juneteenth to be a state holiday. And whereas Juneteenth reminds all of us of the continued resilience of people of African descent in America. And whereas protests against systemic racism have borne brutal consequences for black people, have struck through all 50 states across the globe, which demonstrate that persistent inequalities continue to exist. And whereas Wisconsin continues to rank as the state with the worst economic racial inequality across eight major metrics, including median income, unemployment rate, homeownership rate, and poverty. And now therefore, it resolves that the village of One Key calls upon all One Key residents to take up the charge to promote racial equity, particularly in the village of One Key. In order to bring true meaning to the significance of the state, as we continue the work to eradicate racism. And be it finally resolved that One Key Village Board claims June 19, 2021, in commemoration of Juneteenth. For when the resolution was duly adopted by the village of One Key, the village of One Key Village Board, at the meeting of 7, 2021. I just thought somebody was gonna say.
Yeah, we just wanted to bring the board and the community into the loop on activity occurring in our organization. Mainly related to the kind of the structural change as a result of Kevin Even and Jim Madden successfully retiring from the village. As well as Lori Halt, who's been our deputy clerk, has a new opportunity in another community, so she's left the organization. And is, is having a new opportunity, a little, little north of us, not too far north. So, but that, whenever we have an employee leave, that, we always look at that as something that we ought to take a moment, look at the organization, consider whether a tweak would be appropriate. In this case, we are hiring a community development director, we hired Tim Semen. Tim is the planning director currently for the city of San Hurry. And he will begin his work on the 21st of June. He'll be situated in the office that Kylie is in currently, Kat is being shifted. I'm gonna take some lumps for this, but she's moving to a cube in the, in the office area. The engineer position, we hired a village engineer under Bill Frederick, is Bill still here? Oh, he did. Bill, this week, I think or last week officially became our public works director, department head for the organization. So I'm excited for Bill, and under Bill, we've hired a new village engineer, staff fellow engineer, his name is Aaron Yankee. Lives in One Key and currently is serving as the engineer and public works director for the village of Portage. We've made a couple fellow city managers pretty upset in those communities, I've heard from both. Because they've got great employees that are heading to One Key. He starts the day after Tim, so he'll be starting on the 22nd. Lori Halt's position of deputy clerk is now filled by Lynn. Lynn Richardson, who has been our front desk worker, community services worker at Village Hall, she's now taking the position of deputy clerk. And we have brought in, and he started today, is a, a full-time, one-year intern from Kansas, Kansas University. And his name's Gabe, help me. Gabe starts today. He is, he's on full-time with us as marketing communications intern, he's gonna be assisting with some of the functions for public engagement at Village Hall. Who are not refilling the part-time front desk, community services representative. So that's the, there's a lot going on, a lot of moving parts, we're eager for the next couple of months to come upon us and settle in, but I did wanna let you know all the changes that are at hand.
Or any questions for Kat and Caitlin, or myself, I said you're not in this interview. So if you have any questions, I was trying to ask. We're all great people, I'll tell you that, and our pool of people that were interviewed and applied to our positions was very strong. Great to see. For those who could bring up their suspicions or things, give these people an opportunity. I know that some areas are really, really changed that were a lot different than One Key. And in talking of Tim during our process, that is not a goal of ours to grow fast, grow large and quickly, fast stores and, and expand quickly. He understands that, he knows that, he's actually excited about the fact that that's not the case here in One Key. So, at least some of us that are from the board, that would be our direction, for sure. Others, when they come in, they're, they're. At this time, we're gonna continue on to One Key. So at this time, we're going to continue on to Wanty. And obviously, we're going to test each other and we'll connect them to the other states as well. I didn't have a chance to interview any of the other candidates, but you know, I don't mind taking time to Caitlin's department to interview them. Well, no, Bill is a commodity. Director does a fantastic job of the bill. Excited to have all of them. All right. Outside of that, you guys, where would we go?
I just said that in the process of moving Bill up, also Ryan Endress is stepping up in our public works department into a crew leader position. So we're excited for him. Isn't that great staff member, anything else?
Great, thank you guys. All right. Next, we have discussion to take action on request by MLG commercials for survey map to the live last nine, part two in two separate lots.
So a quick note on this item, and we do have representatives coming up from MLG who are going to touch on this. But this was published for a public hearing. It was incorrectly placed on the agenda. So there will be no public hearing held. I did confirm with MLG that carrying out the public hearing at the meeting on the 21st will be acceptable to them and their process. So we're okay there. But they did ask if they can spend time talking about what is proposed and having you ask them questions as well this evening. So if that's okay, okay.
Evening. I didn't show the pitch, but then I'll take capital. And just want to talk a little bit about the post-ESM and the private business part. We have a second user that was by the, the last one in post-ESM. So we basically take a line from the file plan, 38241 user, which has been asked for in the this part. Pretty straightforward. And the question just for presenting, all the questions are away now. So we have a public hearing in two weeks and we'll be able to board with the CSM. Okay, or members of questions? This is a lot that's way pragmatic, but we just don't correct on the north side. Questions in terms of this time? I look forward to the next meeting. Okay.
So there'll be no action tonight.
Yeah.
Yep. Perfect, number seven, discuss the action resolution authorized in the issue useful revenue application for co-energy project for smoots to be executed by the corporation. Brian, anyone?
Yes, so if you look at page 277 of your packet, this is the cover page for this item. It's effectively the same thing that we did earlier in the meeting regarding the MROs for the Octopi project. This is a different project. This is the co-entry project on Main Street. But similar to the Octopi agreement, we have language in the development agreement that we've already executed, that says that we would issue the MRO in 30 days of execution of the agreements. No, this doesn't change any terms and conditions of the agreement itself. It's just essentially the administrative step to issue the MRO. And so there is a recommended motion, staff recommended motion at the bottom of page 277.
Nothing to change on your end?
No, again, this is administrative in nature. We've already agreed to the amount that's identified in the MRO.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issues of useful revenue application in an amount of $6,600. Do you really want me to have a seat? The motion remains accepted. I'm going to try, any other comments? Okay, hearing none, all the question on, we were saying aye? Aye, oh, I say aye. Next, we have discuss and take action on proposal amendment to public improvements pretty much urban problems.
So if you recall, in March, we approved an agreement with, I'm just going to say Urban, there's a couple LLCs involved. But this relates to the land that has been since sold to date manufacturing. As part of that process, there's been communications between Urban, the village, and the public service commission of Wisconsin related to potential water improvements that need to be made on the land. And so the initial development agreement contemplated the fact that there may need to be some public improvements and that a water study would need to be concluded and approved by the village. Urban satisfied that obligation and got its water study done. And so that's essentially the purpose for the amendment. Now we have a few more facts that explain to us the improvements that would be done. All of any costs regarding the improvements will be picked up by Urban. This is, there's no cost associated with the village. But that's essentially the purpose for the amendment is now we have more information that gives us a little bit more specificity on the water improvements. And so again, we have a recommended motion at the bottom of page 315 of the packet. But I'm certainly able to answer any questions.
Or any questions? Yeah, wait for a moment. Move to approve the amendment that's already approved, less agreement.
I second.
Okay, so we're moving by a little second by Nellin, right? Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye? Oh, I say aye. Discussing the action on proposal on AVI system taking a hybrid meeting technology.
The village board did authorize, you guys are welcome to come, did authorize the village to initiate work to understand our current technologies, our current systems, and the things in which our systems for holding public meetings really don't work well in an environment in which we're able to broaden the public engagement using a hybrid approach. Hybrid meaning both in-person as well as very effective virtual participation. We do think that in what we've learned entering a pandemic situation, the ability of something such as a pandemic to turn us on a dime to need to work differently, to continue to do good government and engage the public in the process really well, that what, what we had was certainly deficient. And you know, we, we went along, made a couple mistakes here and there. But, but we certainly learned that the, the technologies out there today could enable us to do some pretty impressive engagement in the future. The charge upon AVI, who hired to do this work, was to both look at our current village halls, so we could enter a hybrid environment really well today, but also to anticipate that solution to be lifted and taken with us to the renovation of the old library for remodeling for a future village hall. So when, this isn't a small investment, which we'll be talking to towards the end of the presentation, but the perspective that I want you right out of the gate to have is that essentially you're looking at our technology improvements, the entire camera system and recording system and software to run good hybrid meetings. That will be our functioning system for a long time in our future home of the old library. So that, that is, that is, that was the charge upon them to deliver a product proposal to us. So with that, happy to turn it over to the AVI team.
Thanks, Todd. My name is Roger, one of the colleagues at AVI, we have an office here in Madison. And joining me is Drew Galacini, who's an engineer. So I'm a talker and he's the brains. So we, I wanted to overview what we did. As Todd said, we were probably, our engagement was to evaluate what you had and then try to figure out how we work in places we've never been before. And that's COVID. And I think we made the comment here tonight a couple times about we're all wide back face to face, but we're never going back to where we don't need technology to bridge that gap of people in different places, people in different time zones. The functionality of what COVID taught us is that technology has to bridge up those gaps. And so what we did for the city, the village, is take a look at what was there, evaluate, and come back with a proposal that says, Todd said in his opening remarks, a long, long time of technology shelf, it was about 500, 700 minutes. And that is a long time for technology. So what we tried to do is say, how do we get to where the best use spaces are today? And then how long will we make that last, whether it's in a move or a different space, by function that the board needs and other trainings, et cetera. So the way we do that, the process we follow is we get state numbers together as many as possible, and we ask questions on how it's going to be used. When we get all that data consolidated, then we start looking at what are those technology pieces to meet those needs? So we start the process for use cases, and then we dive down into the equipment and technology to get there. So we delivered that report that's in the minutes or in the presentation packet. You can all see it's pretty thorough, probably more than we want to read about technology, but it tells you how we got there. And then the other thing I'll mention, because Todd says at the end, we'll talk about pricing, but I want to mention upfront that all the pricing for the village is on EOA pricing, but state, Scott, just as a side note, I don't want to forget that. And then Drew's just going to walk you through the big pieces of the technology, because as Todd said, it's very complicated, but we found an overview of those pieces.
I would just add in that, yeah, in the complication of what Drew's going to share with you, the other thing that staff really insisted upon is that the end user, us sitting here, have to be able to use this system with a couple, with a couple button pushes. So as complicated as on the backend, the investment is to make it really easy on the user.
And I think everyone, Todd's team, everyone we met, ease of use was the top of that users. So we definitely established that in this. It's a one-touch, you know, simple one.
As what I mentioned, I am just going to give a quick, very brief rundown of the sort of technology that will be updated as part of this project without boring you a lot of details. But by all means, feel free to either interrupt questions or ask questions afterwards. Questions? So the first step of the development process is finding user pain points or user experiences that simply need to be brought up and speed. Things that we heard most often here, the existing projection system, you know, with presentation and content, not exactly simple, single looking, but microphones are going to be using at once. Recording system need replacement with low recorded English quality, maybe unreliable equipment and operation of the system need conversed. You should room system with web conferencing is currently not possible. So we would like to make the room, give multiple, but we're going to be meetings near soon. There's current removal overflow, audio or video needs to be in case of lobby space, which we understand is legally required. So we would like to make that, make that primary as well by bringing speakers and displays into that space. And then last, not at all least, the system does not have any central controls in use of the interface. So we would like to provide that into the facility. So running down from the displays all the way to control, real simply, the existing projection system will be replaced, a new screen of higher brightness, higher resolution, overall higher quality installed in the same place as the existing screen. An additional ceiling monitor display will be added facing the door to act as a confidence monitor for those who might not be able to see the screen clearly. One or two ceiling monitor displays to be added in the lobby area outside. As far as source devices go, we will provide additional connections at the table via HDMI. Provide HDMI connection and actual lecture. We will also give a portable document camera produced and connected when needed. And there will be a wireless video presentation system as well, so that it would be simple for any of board members to present from their device wirelessly from their location. This would be especially helpful with the flexible nature of the furniture. Regarding the audio system, because of the flexible nature of the furniture, we're looking at a wireless microphone system, especially with using now with enough microphones where everyone's seated at the base. The total of 17 wireless system microphones. We also have two wireless volume microphones, the call microphones, or presenters to roll through. Existing ceiling microphones would be, oops. Existing ceiling microphones will be eliminated in favor of using these microphone. New ceiling speakers will be installed in the courtroom and the lobby for all the media requirements. We're going to add an assistive listening system that will add two hearing telefoil compatible receivers. A brand new video system will be installed, replacing altering of the existing cameras with new higher quality HD models. They would have a variety of presets for common uses programmed. It would be easily recallable from the central control interface. A dedicated video recording appliance will be installed, so it would be simple one-touch recording of all meetings. And a selected camera to the recording would also be routed to the web conferencing interface, so that it can be used as a webcam for the Zoom calls and therefore broadcasting immediately out to the world. For the web conferencing portion, Zoom will be used as a web platform on a Village Wanty PC that will be provided. And that will be connected via the microphones, speakers, displays in the room. And allow remote participation, two-way to participants on the other end of the wall. And last but not least, a dedicated control system would be installed. We'll provide a single touch panel interface that can be provided at the table for control of the entire system. That same identical user interface would also be something that could be put on to the devices of the board members for control. So that's kind of my idea. Any questions I can answer right off the bat?
Would you say, is there anything besides setting up the programming and the software to work in that particular room at current village hall? Is there anything in this proposed project acquisition that would be a wasted investment in, in, in moving to a new facility?
The only recurring cost to moving six months or a year. Only six months or a year, whatever the loop happens, is the integration of the labor. So the ceiling, to answer your question, American, he refused. With the exception of some kidney, which is insignificant, possibly. The rest of you, regardless. Questions?
You were talking about moving to another location, so then, to what I understand, the work would be built out, there would not be any additional equipment?
No, we, we're designing the system to be in any space. The space that you live in today in the village hall is not a great conducive space for these types of movements. Your new space might be a better, but the technology will work wherever they put it. Might be arranged a little differently.
Okay, and then it says that the fees you have there, you got some shipping fees, what should we be, should cost?
Well, this is an overall budgetary number on a formal quote, you'll have shipping and tax. I don't know what the exact cost will have.
Okay, and Mr. Powell, you decided to go with this. How long would a J4 be longer?
That's a pretty question. So in our world today, everything is delayed. There's a worldwide chip shortage, connecting to technology, going to this room is delayed. Our best guess today is it's, it's at least three months out. Best case, a more realistic picture is this could take five to six months.
Thank you.
It's quite lethal, unfortunately. I would like to make just one more comment. System is flexible. And I think that's what you're seeing here, you know, the first time back face to face. This system is designed for that future flexibility. And I think that word, the only other comment I would make is meeting equity. Everybody wants to be represented, whether it's community or board members or an attorney. And this system will allow a meeting equity, which means everybody can all be seen here. That's pretty much a future of technology, meeting equity.
Perfect, thank you. I don't have any technology questions, one, because I'm not, I'd say I don't. So I don't even know what to ask. But we do have questions for Todd and Brian and Nate with regards to page 322 at the top, where we talked about budgeting.
With regards to, uh, page three twenty-two at the top, where we talked about budget impact. And you're bringing up the ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act that the village is going to receive up on my four million dollars. If we're looking to put this in, what other things could we potentially use that money for? And second, does this fit in that money? I, I guess we're, we're kind of throwing it outside a dollar mark. We don't, we can't have a certain dollar mark that we're looking at, other things on the horizon that probably would prioritize this is where we have to have it versus this.
Yeah, you, you have, you have ventured somewhat into a different agenda item for a future meeting. We, I, I think we have to be, be a little cautious while talking about specifics of ARPA and its funding capabilities. Um, specific to this project, or this project though, Renee and I have been on a multitude of uh, sessions and seminars, uh, it's rapidly evolving. But guidance has come out clear that, uh, in recognizing that this, this move, this transition is directly attributable to, to what we've experienced due to the COVID pandemic. Uh, and a, and a shift for us that we're facing, that it is, uh, if not entirely a majority eligible for funding under the ARPA Act and the one point four that we expect to receive. Um, I'll let you, I'll let you grab the mic in a second to add some things, but I would note that um, evaluation of other uses, um, is something that we are planning to discuss. We're actually going to start the department heads tomorrow and we'll be back to a board meeting with all of you to discuss the other range of potential uses and how concerned the community, uh, due to the outcomes you're covering. Uh, do you want to touch more on?
So as Todd said, it's both been on multiple webinars. I've read the actual interim final guidance or whatever it's called. I read all the question answers. It's still, our book funds are still continually evolving. Um, there's questions to treasury, um, I'm sure on an hourly basis, they're going to be coming out with more guidance. The last guidance that they came out with was on May twenty-seven. And, you know, everything, the overarching principles of the use of the ARPA money is, you know, what need or deficiency was caused by COVID and does a potential expenditure address that need? And so, you know, we obviously found what need, um, in terms of our meeting structure and how we run our meetings to the COVID, and this directly addresses that need. So, um, I, I'm quite confident with the guidance itself now that this would be covered.
So Todd, you said that this shouldn't be something I talked about, right? I'm, I'm looking at what's in here where it shows budget impact for this brings ARPA into it. And all I'm saying is when we budget things on an annual basis, we're looking at, here's our budget, here's what we'd all like to do.
Well, I would say this is not saying, here's our budget, we're going to do this before we know anything else that's going on. To the extent that you want to have more information about, or more certainty maybe, that you're going, that this, the funding that would come from the government would be used for this, or you want more information about how that funding could be used for other projects. I, I, you know, that, a, a high level discussion on that, I think you can add in light of that. And it'll also be, I mean, I'm not trying to advocate one way or the other, I mean, that would be, you know, one of the reasons why you wouldn't wait to make a motion on this is if you want more information on, on those topics. So to that extent, it is related to, to what you have here.
So since we're six months, um, technology's not getting faster to order it. But you have to make the decision that's best for how you spend that, that money. And that money was created to bring technologies over. We're doing this in lots of communities and villages in this, this area. That, that's how it's being used. What else you use the money for? No idea. We got lots of items, I'm sure. But now.
Um, I have a question. Does anyone have any idea when you would expect these funds to arrive?
So the state of Wisconsin needs to receive the funds first from the federal government. Um, and that should be happening soon. Um, we will receive half the money this year. I expect it in about a month. So about seven hundred thousand will come this year and then seven hundred thousand a year from now. Um, and the, the state of Wisconsin is currently lit together a sort of a, a form that we will have to fill out. Um, presumably next week, um, in order to formally request our money. And then it will come within thirty days or so.
Does, uh, purchasing this have to be part of the request or are those already in?
Um, so this grant is very different from, say, the, the, um, roughs recovery money that we received last year. In this case, we are receiving money upfront. Um, you know, whether, you know, and they're encouraging people to take their time and plan this out because we have, um, four years to spend the money versus the cares, it's a very short timeframe. Uh, so we're getting the money upfront and it doesn't, you know, again, then at that point we can choose on what we spend it on. Um, it, the only restriction is that it has to be a cost that's incurred after March third, twenty twenty-one. So you can't really go back and, you know, pick up costs that you may have had in prior to March third. Uh, but anything after March third is potentially eligible.
Thank you.
Is there, uh, obviously after the fact that we're going to have to prove, prove that this was worthwhile as a chance that we might do something, they'll say, no, that's not what we wanted anymore. They're not going to, it's not going to be like this, it's a group of everything.
Um, I mean, we will be subject to audits and we will have to track, you know, what we spend the money on. Um, and what they're recommending as some guidance is evolving, you can make a decision on something. And you document the guidance that was available at that time. Um, if the guidance changes after that, we're still usually okay if you make your decision based on the guidance at that term that was in effect at that time.
Okay, so I'm going to look for a motion.
Look, Chris, let me just say, I mean, if, if the board cares to weigh this with other potential projects, we, we do hope to be within a month or back to the board with some further discussion um, about, uh, about other potential programs and uses. And certainly this, the window of time, the three, three or four years to spend it is a reality for us. Um, the reason that staff has moved this initiative as quickly as, as we have is out of interest to bring this solution to the public as quickly as possible. Um, but, uh, I mean, a, another, another two weeks or another month. Um, I know when talking to these guys, they, they've said that it, it, the pursuit of these technologies is, is pretty competitive at the moment. Um, but at the same time, I don't want the board to feel like you're in a corner because you're talking, you're talking upwards of a hundred and forty, hundred and forty something thousand dollars. I don't know if you wanted to review the cost proposal quick. Hundred and fifty.
Pretty close. So within between these, between the costs and time. Much of that's not a transfer. You put it on sites, right? Put it next place. I, I really don't have much else. It's, it's the labor piece of running the cables and the program. They shouldn't have to do it real quick. It's really the cost of the labor of installing the wires and, and painting the pieces. So I, I can't get to the numbers. We could look at it and send that tomorrow. We can. We can get to it for Todd, however. I need to do the rest.
So, yeah, so you asking Bill essentially, let's, let's do our best to cobble through using our current system and our current building. And then newly install this with a new move.
I agree with that personally. It works better. I mean, it's not that you get a job, it's like, there's some I don't know how long we can. The timeline.
Uh, you know, there's a couple moving, there's a couple moving parts. Um, I don't know how, no, we'll start to view.
I mean, I think, I mean, I think Dr. Reynolds' comment on the timing for this project is probably, as it relates back to the cost that's in the, the, the packet. But I do agree, Todd, that, you know, we're not in a position right now to have a, a detailed discussion of the move from Village Hall to the, the whole life, which we obviously have been talking about.
Broadly, let me, let me just say that, let's say we line up the dollars to accomplish the move uh, by year end, um, you could expect a good, probably seven to eight months of renovation be, before a successful move occurs. You're probably towards the end of next year. I would guess when we successfully settle in.
I think that would be a good discussion for our next board meeting or this following board meeting about that particular topic. But also with this decision, so I won't debate that right now. I'm going to say no, um, tonight, but it's, it's not going to be a motion. But, um, it's not that I'm against the technology, but it's more of a timing thing. And I understand that it's going to take less than half of the more information. Did we only have to go once? Like my question, the money? So. How's everybody feel about that? So can we just table it for now? Is that what we'll be doing? So I might come up to the table aside. And it was second from Bill Ring. Any other comments? Okay, I have a question. Uh, Paul, can you respond?
Hi.
Both. I just have, thank you, gentlemen. Very important. I appreciate your, thank you. For those of you that see the network on paper. Discuss and take action on process or consideration of TIF three overlay request memo capital investments. Want to keep this this park.
So I call up Joe Brookridge from MLG again. Uh, a request has been made by MLG to, uh, to continue the remaining public infrastructure needs for the unimproved portions of the Wantaqui Business Park. Um, I don't, I'm not going to take all of, all of Joe's thunder. I do just want to touch base on what staff is approaching you about today. And that's essentially asking the question on whether you as a board care to instruct staff to proceed on a process to consider. If you instruct us on that, that does not create a TIF district. It does initiate an engagement with Ellers and Associates who we've worked with on TIF creation. Uh, and, uh, I would add that if you do instruct us to take, uh, to take that step, if you, if, if you like what's proposed here for further consideration, we would also, uh, have a contingency on that motion that would require MLG to sign that, uh, we would receive cost recovery on all expenses incurred by the village, should the TIF not be created. That makes sense. Okay.
Again, this is a meaningful, yeah, I want to keep this going. Um, here too, I present to you a high level review of our request for creating a TIF overlay in the Wantaqui Business Park. Over the last two and a half years or so, we've sold nine hundred properties out of Wantaqui Business Park. And of those, seven are in businesses to area to our expansion. And in order to capitalize on the momentum and help develop some of the areas that aren't developed yet and continue economic developments um, in the visit park, uh, we're requesting the, uh, the village move forward with the creation of the TIF overlay for, for the park. A couple of times over the last few years, we've had some larger users that have inquired about the property, um, maybe kicked their tires, maybe not. And realizing we weren't in a position to move quickly and efficiently if you have a couple of months to get out of the door and really develop something nice along Highway nineteen. Uh, so one of the reasons to, to move forward with the TIF overlay. And the other goal that we have is to structure the TIF in a way that would reduce the, um, the risk for both village and for MLG itself. So what we're doing is we're requesting a overlay TIF for twenty years for the property. Basically, they have, they're out there, the twenty acres around Highway nineteen. And then the eleven and a half acres that's up on, on the course that we talked about earlier.
And I'd refer you to page three thirty-nine, the packet has the map exhibits.
Yep, that was, uh, that's sure here that we're looking at for the overlay. So then they would be all applied to a CSM fourteen five fifty-eight, which is the northern portion. And then the nine inch long base flat, base to the final flat. So in order to move forward with this, we're looking for, so all our responsibilities of what MLG will do, what the village is doing, what we're asking the village to do is to manage the process to create the TIF. And Todd, I went a little bit more in detail earlier on that. Ourselves the preparation of the engineering drawings and construction that goes on, similar to what was done in the past out of the park. And manage to phase destruction, um, as, as necessary or mixed that in a little while. As a, as a way to help reduce the risk for everybody involved. And then MLG, on the other hand, we would obtain a loan to pay the TIF costs. And then we would market property to third-party buyers. Um, MLG is not a building developer, strictly on the land side of this, markets to other developers, build buildings as we've seen in the past. The, um, the overlay risk reduction measures that we'd be doing, uh, we wouldn't ask to spend, build it and they shall come. We would rather just spend the upfront money as needed in equipment engineering and TIF costs. And then when we have a user in hand, then we would go ahead and work with the village to get the improvements built. Similar to what we did on the St. John's property on the Frank H extension, um, before by your stall, their best demo. Um, and then we could, uh, there's, there's three ways to phase that. Basically, we have a land that's north of the Frank H extension. They need an attention basin, um, located about a tishtack and a versus the property. That can be phased one, um, the prospect that six acres currently. Then, um, we could also decide, uh, profit projects needs sewer extension from off-site come up behind the south of St. John. North of Frank H and then central three hundred feet that can be a phase two, which will open up for another three acre user. And then the last phase would be to extend Frank H and utilities all the way to these property line for future economic expansion to the east. So, and that's maybe would limit the risk for, for ourselves and for the village. Uh, one thing that we would look for also is for the village to refinance the debt. The pay going debt once the TIF is a lock, once the user's replaced, you know, the air permit is. And if it's guaranteed to pay any bill of borrowing back, we would just look to have that taken out. Just help us out in our projects and you got to be safe in the borrowing. The, uh, initial numbers that we looked at is we need about five hundred thousand dollars per acre of value to make the progress work. And over and above that, if it's a nicer building to on Highway nineteen, which is expected, there would be some room to do some potential developer incentives, building developer incentives in there as well. Should that be, be necessary. From a land use standpoint, uh, right now, the, the land use has not relied use of office. And through the process, we will look to change the, the zoning from, or the land use from Wantaqui Business Park to more of a mixed use, which will allow more light industrial, commercial, office, uh, type uses, um, every eighteen. And then, uh, like I mentioned, you do have, uh, we, we actually have prospects for the whole twenty acres right on Highway nineteen. So it could be a really easy deal if both of them come to fruition. Uh, we have a six acre user for the north side of Frank H and then a potential fourteen acre user. and then a potential fourteen acre user to live to feast on the expansion. So, and that's a high level view of what we're looking for. And the time that you're just looking to answer any questions and, or the staff, or the CDA, potentially put some more meat on the holes and, and work through the, more details.
I just, can I just add into that a little bit, Chris, that there are elements to what Joe just shared that I will admit, and Joyce heard me say, are, I'll call it some wishful thinking. I think the, the refi com concept is gonna be tricky. I think the developer incentive for the end user could be tricky. And even the front end engineering could be tricky. So I don't want that, those elements that the board might find tricky to be something that might dissuade you from even taking a step towards exploration of the potential. Those are elements and aspects of negotiation that would occur as we were to engage a developer, potential users over the course of a process.
All right, so I'm gonna just kind of do it around you. Comments, initial thoughts from our board members. Who do you go first?
Okay, um, I'm just pointing at all working states that we're going to, like, head, so listen to this. It sounds like you already have some prospective buyers for this area. So then my question is, what is the need for TIF? TIP overlay is not a wide area, you already have prospective buyers. A lot of businesses have developed in the current area or developed a part without funding. They have NASH board. And then I question, one thing that goes to my mind when we start discussing TIP, tips, whatever, is are we saying come, we'll give you, give a business money? Those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Well, I share some of the same thoughts, trust me, Brian.
Okay, now run up. Did you say, right?
That, that, that's the technical value that we're looking at to help pay off all the costs associated with the construction. So, and bringing. Yeah, the local area from the year, we used to go twelve hundred dollars to flip the road to twelve, fourteen hundred dollars. So we got two point four million dollars in, in costs. Subject to engineering design.
Phil, I'm still a bit expensive dead end road. It would sure be nice to get that road that end up on the open road. Right now, that dead ends and it's gonna dead end farther down and it just keeps feeding everything back to where we're already at. I'd like to see a little bit more access to someone, I realize it's a different, over there. It would be nice.
That, that's a good point, Phil. I'll, I'll note, yeah, I'll note that we're in discussions with the stats is that there's already been public discussion about process and procedures towards, well, USA Amendment already has occurred, discussions of annexation and future development, and even conceptual road connection to Hogan are in active discussion with the stats is now.
So you mentioned there was available nine, if we use some of the nine users.
Oh, we still like, we use seven, we're gonna use versus two over expansion.
How, how much is left in there in the park for that? I mean, you know how high last year will be at this point?
Eleven and a half acres of land.
Doesn't matter, things are.
Everything's gone in the process of.
So I shared some of my other questions were, I would agree with some of them. And I'm, I'm number one that's gonna shy away from exploring opportunities and what we can do. If it's hard for me to hear you say you have users, maybe if you could, on potential.
A user would be a viable land, so we've got six acres north of Frank H. So they buy the land unless they build the buildings.
So what, I guess my question should be different. When we hear that you have those potential buyers already, what incentive is there for us to say, all right, well, he has the buyer. Why do we need to put ten dollars towards this? Help me understand why.
It's, it's really, it's really simple, man. Twenty eight years times, say, a hundred, twenty five thousand dollars an acre. Minus the cost, it's just basically you're building a property and selling it. It's basically that first.
So it's more of a partnership for the developer and the village.
And then that's.
There's those users, and there's a certain level of profitability for MLG as well as the village can protect all of this increases for.
Correct, and then that's to be always convinced of partnership between the village and MLG. You help us out in the beginning, you help get the stuff built, sold, yes, you guys are the, the long term.
And based on what we're looking at for those potential users, do we have a dollar amount that you're thinking is going to be generated from those users? Is that something that you'd have a guess in at this point?
I don't even have that right off the top of my head. Twenty acres, tax, five hundred thousand dollars per acre about.
My math isn't great, Thompson, your visit.
Ten, ten, it's gotta be ten days, not a hundred.
Thank you.
And then, then to my client, in fact, the village, no rates of eighteen something, sixteen something.
And you're, you're, you're seeing that as a potential of twenty year payback period?
Correct.
Is there a way that that could be shorter?
If the village takes a side of the debt, yes. Our, our borrowing rate is much more expensive than the village borrowing rate. It's a long, long time before.
Okay. Those are my questions. So we're being asked basically to decide if we want to go exploring this, correct? And it's gonna cost us roughly fifteen thousand?
The, yeah, that's the expense paid to Ellers to coordinate process. Although before we would initiate that, we would have an agreement with MLG on cost reimbursement.
And to be clear, if we go through that process and we choose not to do this, MLG pays that cost.
Well, we would deduct it from the escrow that would require them to pay upfront. So yes, they would pay.
So I risked the village nothing to put out there.
Well, I, I think where, where there's risk for the board to consider is what occurs in the, you know, in the realm of public debate. You know, TIF has been a tricky question for the village. And every time, you know, you, you open up the can and start to talk about the concepts for a potential project, you enter into a vigorous public debate. So I think that's, that's where there exists risk for, for the board.
Yeah, well, I appreciate the comment. I'm looking at, we've had a relationship with MLG for ten years, nineteen years? Twenty years with our business, business park. You know, then we did it there and for many years it sat and sat. So we sound like, really, where you've seen that pick up. So I, I will say that I'm in favor of looking down the road. They've been a part of us, we've worked well together. So I'm gonna make a motion to. Recommend the motion to move to assign the community development, is that, is that what I want?
Well, good, I'm glad you brought that up. One thing, and I discussed it in the memo here, that would be, we would veer from past practice, would be to utilize the CDA as the body to evaluate TIF creation. Several times in our process in the past, we've utilized the plant commission. I've heard comments along the lines from our plant commissioners that our role is more about design, land use, et cetera, not so much the financial component and intricacies of a TIF deal. What we have today that we didn't have then, and two, two years ago, was an active and engaged CDA with members who really have, I, I would, I would say, some really solid talents and skills in financial analysis and review. I think our CDA is poised to be a really sound body in evaluating the complexity of finances related to TIF. Not to say that the plant commission isn't capable. I'm just saying the CDA is really poised for that. And staff's recommendation is to utilize the CDA. We don't have to, that is an option. You can still use the plant commission as we have all passed.
That's, that's, since we're looking at it in a different light, it's still what you're saying. How is it going to be determined, like, Brian, we're going off. How are we gonna determine the divided line between the CDA and the plant commission?
Well, I, I think what Todd's talking about is, you know, the normal process when you're creating a TIF is you, you have to have a recommendation from the plant commission that goes to the village board. And if that gets approved, it goes to charter report. And I think what Todd is talking about is just with that issue as it relates to TIF creation, instead of having the recommendation come from planning commission, it would come from the CDA. And that is something that it's allowed by the statutes. But as a village board, you would need to, you know, whether you do that tonight or you do it some other time in the future, you would have to essentially grant the CDA that authority for this project based on the resolution that you approved two years ago, creating the CDA. So it is, I think, within the, the bounds of what is on the agenda right now. And I think Todd's recommended motion is appropriate. You know, at, at the same time, if, if the thought process by you all is, we'd like to make that decision about the CDA versus plant commission later, but we do want to authorize Todd to work with Ellers and other folks on the potential creation of TIF. You, you can certainly do that, say, and, and make that up.
Okay, that's what I would refer to do in my motion.
So then I think what you would do is to basically say.
Start it after the end.
Yeah, motion, motion to authorize the village administrator to engage Ellers, I'll just move on from there.
All right, so motion to authorize the village administrator to engage Ellers and Associates to provide the TIF coordination services, continue the technology, capital signing, and cost, cost recovery agreement in place of the escrow, an appropriate sum is determined by the village administrator.
Second. Okay, motion's been made, seconded, we have, on this, board members. Yeah, all the question on favor, say aye. Aye, both?
No.
Joe, I, I think it's three, two.
Three, two.
If I believe.
Should you roll?
If you'd like.
Phil? All right. I, I, Sam, no?
No.
Okay, so by three, two, vote. How many votes? One last motion. Motion better that, second, just a second. I'm fair said. All right.